Clerk, if we could begin with roll call.
Commissioner Malika.
Present.
Commissioner Hemson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Ode recio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
All right, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. If I could invite you all to stand and join us. Do we have a motion this morning to approve the agenda? Salute. Can you press your button?
Oh, thank you.
All right, and then we'll be able to vote. All right, that passes unanimously. The first order of business before we get to awards and presentations and citizen communication will be the appointment and selection of our chair and vice chair. At this time, is there a motion for a new chair?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to, first of all, thank you for a year of being the chair. We're able to go through a lot of transition preparing for us for the next phase in Adams County. So thank you very much for your work. With that said, I'd also like to nominate Lynn Baca as our next chair for Adams County Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Lynn Baca as our new chair. Let's all vote. Congratulations, Commissioner Baca. We're gonna, yes, let's take a minute.
Aww. You're all so grateful.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes, sir.
I know we're gonna swap seats, but could we also do the vice chair before we do that?
I was gonna make that suggestion as well, because then everyone can be where they need to be. Do we have a motion for a vice chair?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Julie Malika as the vice chair.
Second.
Motion and a second for Commissioner Julie Malika to be our vice chair. Let's all vote. Let's do a roll call vote. Clerk. Commissioner Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ode recio. Commissioner Malika.
Yes.
Commissioner Hemson.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter. Yes. All right, congratulations, Commissioner Malika. And to move it all around and keep the electronics clean, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess for IT and staff to move our devices, so our votes are recorded as who we are. And we'll adjourn and be back. So our votes are recorded as who we are and will adjourn and be back. All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. So welcome everyone. First of all, I want to welcome the new commissioners. This is our first meeting of two thousand twenty-five as the twenty twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine Board of County Commissioners. So I'd like to welcome Commissioners Julianne Molica, Julie Duran, I'm so sorry, Julie Duran Molica and Kathy Henson. With that, we are at item number five in the agenda. Then we'll get to elected officials communication if you would like to say something at that time. Okay, so good morning. Our first recognition this morning is one we're especially excited about because it offers an opportunity to recognize an extraordinary young person in our community. From this board and from countless other adults in our community, you often hear and talk about how youth are our future and how much we want to foster opportunities for today's young people to thrive. This recognition is a chance to walk that talk, to shine a spotlight on both a student in Adams County who is exemplary and on a program that is helping helping give him and other students like him opportunities to excel. So Jake Horvath, a student at Holstrom K through eight in Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools District, is this year's top student from the Adams County Education Consortium Career Expo. So the Career Expo offers eighth-grade students the chance to interact with the real world of work and to learn and practice skills that will benefit them not only in their future career and in their educational pursuits, but also in many other facets of their lives moving forward. Some of these skills include interviewing, shaking hands, making eye contact with others, how to address and present themselves professionally, how to ask meaningful questions and so much more. So we are so proud of this program in Adams County and so thrilled to shine a spotlight on young people who are starting off so strong like Jake. Jake was recognized by the businesses and exhibitors at the Career Expo as the top performer. So today we are joined by both Jake and Letia Brandina, the Executive Director of the Adams County Education Consortium. I'd like to invite Letia up to the podium to speak and introduce Jake if he would like to give any remarks.
Good morning and welcome to our new commissioners as well. This award is definitely about Jake, but the event is also about Adams County. If you haven't seen yet, by two thousand thirty-nine, we're going to have eighteen percent less eighteen-year-olds going into the workforce because of our nationwide dip in fertility. This can be really daunting, but Adams County has consistently made the decision to continue investing in our youth, starting at eighth grade. The expo is in its twentieth year this year. And to celebrate that, we brought it back into Adams County proper at Riverdale Regional Center and we expanded the event to two days. So it is now the largest event in Colorado. It was six thousand students that Jake was recognized as the number one student at. And we had it over two full days where students got to explore three different spaces from the dome to the outside space to the Riverdale Regional Complex in different areas of industry, post-secondary readiness workforce. The consortium had over four hundred professional organizations and industry professionals there this year, including student-run career technical education booths, made up over half of our booths. We know that when our students see near peers expanding their passion in high school, it is also motivating to them. We also know that study after study show that eighth grade is a pivotal moment. It is the time where exposure needs to begin, where our students either decide to check out or they see themselves in a future career path. Might not be the one they choose, but just them starting to see and explore is a crucial stage. Jake had the best comments from our industry professionals, but also from his teachers. And so I just wanted to read one of the ones from his teacher and then give the rest to your mom after. His drive and ambition are unusual to find in such a young man. I have many times been both surprised and honestly, honestly, a little awed by his ability to read the world and talk so assuredly about big ideas he encounters. His confidence in this is driven by his ability to connect the dots between ideas and people. And you would think that Jake's profound ability to do so might result in an arrogant kid. But Jake is anything but. He is friendly and warm and funny and kind. And we will miss him terribly when he goes to high school, but we continue looking forward to all his accomplishments. All of the comments highlighted your leadership, highlighted unique attributes of a true leader. And it is my honor that you get to be part of this today. And if you want to say anything, go for it.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone in my life because they shaped me into the person I am today. I would like to thank my family, my school for teaching me the ways to be respectful and kind to the people around us. I would like to thank my team from sports. They showed me teamwork and leadership and just everyone else in my life.
Because of the delay, his little brother got to be here today and he wanted a special shout out. His older brother said no, but you know.
Do you like to introduce, do you introduce your family? Didn't you have a little fan club up there as well? Oh, there she is. Sneaking back.
You can invite them up and we could just work and take a picture.
Yes, I'd love to invite them up, my mom and my little brother.
All right, board, why don't we take this, just a moment here to go down with Jake and his family and take a pic group, group photo. And commissions offer our community's residents a meaningful, meaningful opportunity to get involved in their county and to have a voice in decisions that impact them, their neighborhoods, businesses, homes, and so much more. For many of the individuals who volunteer to serve on a board, their commitment is for a season of their life. For others, however, volunteering for an Adams County Board becomes a decades-long passion, passion project during which their efforts to help shape so much within our community. Today, we have the special privilege of honoring someone whose decades of board service in Adams County have far-reaching impacts. Jean Chancho served as the Adams County Representative to the Metropolitan Football Stadium District Board from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand twenty-four. And in that time, he not only played a major role in the process and planning of the Broncos stadium, but also helping in stu- helping steward and advocate for the taxpayer money that helped fund the stadium itself. That included an instrumental role in a large shareback of funds, more than one point one million dollars to Adams County from the district. Commissioner Udrihio, would you like to read the proclamation?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. This proclamation reads, recognition of Jean Chancho. Whereas Jean Chancho served on the Metropolitan Stadium District Board of Directors as the Adams County Representative for twenty-seven years since nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Jean served as the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committees for the District and brought his legal expertise to the table and was always dialed into board business events when others were not so focused. Whereas Jean was very engaged in the work of the district and worked on the sale of the Broncos team, which resulted in almost one point one million dollars to Adams County. Whereas Jean worked on the naming rights negotiation to ensure the deal was maximized in order to use the funds to enhance the publicly-owned stadium facility. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners would like to recognize Jean for his service on the Metropolitan Stadium District Board of Directors and representing the county for almost three decades, staying focused on Adams County as our representative and earnestly following through with his appointment. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims recognition of Jean Chancho, signed by all five commissioners.
All right, congratulations, Jean. So today we are, we are joined not only by Jean, but also representatives from some of the organizations here in Adams County that benefited from those funds. Here specifically to thank Mr. Chancho and offer insight about his service, how his service made a difference for them and for Adams County residents. First I'll hand things over to Byron Fanning, Director of Adams County Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts, to share more about the stadium funding and the tangible impact Mr. Chancho's service has had on our county. Byron?
Well, good morning, commissioners, and of course a welcome to Julie and Kathy. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners for Adams County and welcome, Jean. Thank you so much for being here today. As we honor Jean today for his many years of service on the Metropolitan Football Stadium District, we would like to share with you the impact that some of his work has had on our community. As mentioned in the proclamation, Jean made quite an impact in his almost three decades of service on our, as our county's rep on the Board of Directors. His legal expertise and work ethic were very much appreciated and benefited the residents of Adams County greatly. Recently, due in no small part to Jean's work, we received over one point one million dollars in funding from the district to be used for youth programs within the county. Our approach was to share the funding with four entities that offer various youth programs. Strasburg Parks and Rec, Highland Hills Parks and Recreation, Bennett Park and Recreation, and A Precious Child. Those partners are here with me today to talk about the impact that this funding has had on Adams County youth as a testament to the important and impactful work that Jean has done for this community. We will start with Yvonne Fishback from Highland Hills. Then we'll hear from Missy Martinez and Nicole Everman from A Precious Child, Angie Graff from Strasburg Parks and Rec. And then I'll wrap things up with a few comments from Leela Shaw from Bennett Park and Recreation, who was unable to make it today. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and call up Yvonne.
Thank you, Byron. Good morning. I'm Yvonne Fishback, the Executive Director of the Highland Hills Park and Recreation District. And I'm joined here today with our Deputy Director, Bob Owens. We're here to talk about your tremendous gift that was provided by Adams County to the youth of our community. We were selected along with our colleagues here to administer funds for the, from the sale of the Denver Broncos to bring activities to the youth of our communities. For us, that specifically meant the unincorporated portions of Adams County in the Denver metro area. Through the generous grant of nearly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we have provided recreational opportunities to over twelve hundred kids through the twenty twenty-four. These kids have participated in a variety of activities, including gymnastics, baseball, softball, basketball, art classes, swimming lessons, field trips, ice skating, sports camps and junior golf. We've even chaperoned day trips for kids to enjoy a fun-filled day at Waterworld. At our current pace, we should be able to continue to provide amazing experiences for our kids for the next two to three years. Through this generous gift and a spirit of cooperation from a local school district, we have been able to reach beyond our district boundaries to include the kids of Mapleton Public Schools and the area not served by a recreation provider. Though there is not a financial need requirement to participate in the program, we are confident that the youth have benefited from this program. Our kids, the kids that have benefited are kids that would not have access to these programs without this kind of financial support. We're grateful for the opportunity to provide recreation to our community and are humbled that the county has entrusted us with this program. On behalf of our staff, our board members, and most of all, the youth of our community, we thank you for making sure that the kids of unincorporated Adams County were included in this amazing program. We look forward to continuing to enhance the lives of these kids through recreation.
Hello, my name is Missy Martinez and I'm the Program's Director at A Precious Child. And I'm joined today with Nicole Everman, our Chief Operating Officer. Thanks to this contribution, A Precious Child has been able to utilize these funds to provide programming through our Give Sports program to children in Adams County. And we've done this through a few different avenues. One of them is by distributing equipment directly to our partners within the district to give to kids as they need and also through hosting several sports camps. In two thousand twenty-three, we had over two hundred children from Adams County attend four, three different sports camps with us, including Denver Broncos alumni, Ryan McMahon and Lucas Gilbert of the Colorado Rockies. In two thousand twenty-four, we had over two hundred children join us in three different sports camps, which featured basketball, soccer, and again with Ryan McMahon of the Colorado Rockies. These camps have really been an opportunity where we've been able to invite our clients to bring their kids out for a day just to really be exposed to the sport, as well as then they each get equipment to take home so that they continue practicing and enjoying the sport. I wanted to share some of the impact that these camps have had on those that we've been able to provide. Ninety-six percent of children say that they're more motivated to participate in sports in the future by attending these camps. Ninety-six percent say that their child has a newfound confidence. And ninety-three percent of caregivers feel closer to their children. So I think it's really important to acknowledge that not only are these camps a fun day for kids to just come and do the sport, but they're really changing how they can interact with their peers and their families. And as much as I can talk about the impact of these camps, I thought it would be best to kind of share directly from some that have participated. One parent said, it was amazing. He found talents he didn't know that he had before. Not only did he learn to play baseball, but he lives it now. He said Ryan McMahon was very friendly and helped him break the insecurities he had inside. It was wonderful. It was a day full of happiness. It further motivated my daughters to want to do more sports in the future. Another parent said, he learned how to embrace something that may have been a challenge. He also learned that he isn't the kiddo with skills, struggles and some activities. Another parent said, my, my child has been wanting to do, to get into a soccer camp for so long. Thanks to you, he was finally able to. We were able to see him working together as a team with other kids, which he needs. Another parent said, my child was very excited to have a new ball he can use to play with his friends and a new glove that looked like the other players. He was able to break out of his shell and step up in practices. He was able to break out of his shell and step up in practices. I believe sports keeps children out of trouble. I think having someone who has made it to the top, come along and hang out and share experiences, shows my kid that they can do the same, that it's not impossible. And I also wanted to share, my children got closer as brother and sister by sharing in sports. So thanks to this funding, we've been able to really make an impact in Adams County by just exposing children to these sports and then ensuring they have the equipment so they can continue to explore it if they would like. So thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Angie Graff. I'm the District Manager at Strasburg Parks and Rec. On behalf of the Strasburg Parks and Rec District, I'd like to extend our heartfelt gratitude for your generous funding. Your support has made a tremendous impact on our programs and we're excited to share the positive outcomes we've witnessed through the use of these funds. By partnering with local organizations such as Strasburg Elementary and Big D's Warriors, we've been able to offer new and different youth programs that otherwise would have not happened in Strasburg. Big D's Warriors is an organization that provides a summer baseball league for kids with disabilities. With this funding, we partnered with them to expand offerings to include basketball and soccer. In the spring, we're also going to do track as well. Instead of potentially going home to an empty house, Strasburg Elementary students have had the opportunity to attend after-school clubs and learn about rockets, volleyball, coding, and crafts. Because we are over thirty miles away from most attractions, our summer field trip program was very popular. We transported kids to museums, zoos, and amusement parks and got them away from their video games for just a little bit. In addition, we've introduced youth art classes such as watercolor, fiber art, sculpture, and collage, again, programs that we were able to offer at little or no cost. And programs such as these have really never been offered through our rec district before. The next project we're working on includes a partnership with Bennett Parks and Rec to launch a new local youth baseball program for kids along the I-70 corridor. The funding will allow us to buy equipment and provide youth scholarships. Our hope is to ensure that every child is able to play summer baseball regardless of cost. But the very best outcome by far has been seeing the smiles on the faces of our participants. The joy and excitement they feel as they learn and experience these new things is truly the best result of this program. We are deeply appreciative of your investment in our community and our kids. We're excited to continue growing these programs and expand opportunities in our community. And to the Department of Parks, to the Department of Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts. A mouthful, but it's a mouthful because they do so much. Thank you for supporting Eastern Adams County from stadium funding to community art projects and open space grants. Your department truly values our partnership and is dedicated to supporting the eastern corridor. So I thank you and thank you.
And so Jean, just a few things that Leila sent about the impact in Bennett. Almost eight hundred and fifty youth swimming lessons were offered at no cost. Free family memberships to their rec center were offered to families with financial needs. All youth programs receive much-needed supplies, including volleyball nets, freestanding basketball hoops for juniors, baseball mounds and batting nets, football jerseys, swimming lane markers, and balls for all of their sports. And the funding also supported some much-needed repairs to the rec center facility in Bennett, which has had its financial struggles over the years. So sometimes when you serve on a board for a long time, you don't really see the impact. And we wanted to make sure that you saw the impact and felt the difference that you've made in our community. So thank you so much, Jean.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Byron, and thank you for all the entities. And Mr. Chancho, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I'm very honored to be honored in this way. And congratulations to Commissioner Baca for becoming the Chair. I want to, first of all, just tell you that there are many highlights from the twenty-seven years that I served on this board. And the first one and last one and the biggest one was being able to bring a check here for over a million dollars for all the things we just heard about, which are so gratifying. And before people think it came out of my bank account, it actually was the ownership group that paid that amount to the former owners of the Broncos that caused that to be a benefit to the board. And then we allocated it to each county and so on. But it's been such an honor and I got an honor also from the board. And because it's been twenty-seven years, I got a jersey that has my name on the back, Bronco, the, you know, throwback jersey with twenty-seven on it, who happens to be my favorite player of all times, Steve Atwater. And so I'll better get him to sign to one of these places. But thank you so much for everything. And it's been my honor to serve for twenty-seven years. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jean. Board, any remarks from the board?
If I might, thank you, Mr. Chancho. You've been engaged in this community for decades and helping serve in various capacities. You're always there to help connect folks in the community to resolve conflicts and to also make sure that, that we were not just giving money to those Broncos and all that, but you brought something home for our, for the community. And I think that's important. And we're going to be pushing the, the next representatives on the stadium districts to make sure that we continue to push for the benefit for us. And that's important. And I appreciate your service on making sure we brought home the bacon. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Jean. So Jean is very humble. There was a lot of work that went into this behind the scenes. So there's a big history on the Metropolitan Stadium District, but Jean was very instrumental in advocating for all of the counties and communities that receive funding and particularly unincorporated Adams. There was, you did the research or you had delegated the research to another state department to go back and look at the actual taxing tolls and all of that. And so I just wanted, thank you for being such a joyful warrior for Adams County and for your service on this board of twenty-seven years. Thank you, Jean. And we're going to come down and take a picture with you right now. And we have a proclamation.
Thank you.
Like this?
Yes, exactly. All right. So item number six on the agenda, public comment. Clerk, did anyone sign up for public comment today?
We do have two people signed up to speak today on general topics.
Okay.
The first person is Pete Fibbs.
Come on down, Mr. Fibbs, and state your name and address for the record, please. And then those here for land use will get to you here in just a moment.
Thank you. My name is Peter Fibbs. I live at one sixty-eight Pluma Avenue in Brighton, Colorado, but a twenty-five-year resident of Adams County. Congratulations, Lynn, on your new seat.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your service, all the county commissioners and all the other employees in this room. I know it's sometimes a thankless job, but somebody's going to do it and you make our lives all better. I just stopped by today to kind of meet some of the new county commissioners, don't know who I am. Lynn has known me for a long time. I was at her swearing-in ceremony in city council in Brighton years ago. And what a path we led. So I'm the founder of Bike Brighton and a former member of the Parks and Rec Board. I'm chairman of the Bike Brighton Committee. You can, if you've been in Brighton and over the last couple of years, you've seen the change that Brighton's made and it's bicycle lanes and community commitment to the project. All parts of the government now think about bikes and talk about bikes. When people ask me what I think the most important thing I did when I served on the board was, passing a complete streets policy for the city of Brighton. When I started, they were mentioning what kind of pencil you should be using to file plans with the city of Brighton. And the word pedestrian was not in the document. So now all these large subdivisions that we're seeing now with community connectivity and bike trails and all that stuff is the foundation for not only me, but all the people that served on that committee. It was certainly a group effort and a whole new generation of people running it today. And that was my intention. So I'm really here today to talk about the Riverdale Plus project. I was invited to an open tables session. I don't even like to think of how many years ago about the development of the fairgrounds. And we talked about the open space that was purchased by Adams County from the developer. This property, if you're not exactly familiar with what I'm speaking with, is between Riverdale High School and the golf course. It's District One, I believe technically, but basically affects everybody in Adams County. So it's a very large piece of property. The master plan's been done. The project's been moving along. The major connectivity pieces to bring the three pieces, the county property, the big open space and the small open space together into one is moving along really nicely. I think it's time to talk about the bike trails and the rest of the project. I always envisioned providing to, there's a group of people, if you're not familiar with in Colorado, that is the Colorado High School Mountain Bike League. My friend Kate has been running that organization for about fifteen years and has nearly two thousand kids racing every fall in Colorado, all in the western slope. There's not a front-range race course available on the front range. So my goal is always to provide to Kate the opportunity for her league to grow along the front range and give them a race course that meets her standard to race. I'm sorry, I'm running out of time.
You're timed out.
I'm not yelling, can I get a minute? Anyway, so I'm actually, I ran into Kate at Bell Swap this year. She's like, Pete, what's with the project? Why are we moving forward? And I'm like, you're right, I forgot, I've been busy. So I'm actually meeting with Kate next week. She's coming out to inspect the property, see how that property can be utilized to help her develop her league. She is a fully experienced nonprofit that has all of her economic benefits. You can just imagine a thousand, she races in two spots on the weekends. So a thousand kids on the property for the weekend with their parents, with their coaches, spending money in Adams County. Her economic benefits package is pretty incredible. So I think it's definitely worth our time.
Okay, I'm going to have to cut you off. So sorry, Mr. Fibbs. The Director of Parks is here and he can give you an update.
I talked with him earlier and we've been in some communication. I'm just, I'm not going to hold you guys up anymore. That's, I just wanted to say hi and thank you and see you around.
Okay, fantastic to see you. Erica?
Kip Sherodis.
Welcome, Mr. Sherodis. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Kip Sherodis, two six four eight Bel Air Street. Madam Chair, congratulations. I get three minutes. I represent, I'm Executive Director of Regional Economic Advancement Partnership for the new commissioners and for new managers, interim managers, assistant managers. REAP is the economic development organization. We get an annual allocation from Adams County. We go from Aurora along the I-70 corridor to Deer Trails. So we are in Adams County. We organize, we network, we connect, we lobby, we scheme, we dream, all for the benefit of Adams County economic development in the eastern part of the county. Today seems to be sort of the student leadership day. I'd like to introduce REAP's super-duper intern, Strasburg High School Senior Dakota Strosser. I yield the floor to Dakota for thirty seconds to let her introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Dakota. I am a senior at Strasburg High School and I plan to go to the University of Wyoming next fall to study psychology, to be a children's counselor. That's my goal. And REAP has really helped me in my people skills and just like reaching out to people and networking. And I've been really blessed to have this role as intern and I've learned a lot and I'm very thankful to be a part of REAP. So, thank you.
Welcome, Dakota.
Dakota is a member of your Strasburg Subarea Plan Advisory Group. She's the student member. She translates for us. She organizes a job fair at her high school. She does everything. On a scale from one to ten, she gets a twelve. So what are REAP's priorities? REAP's priorities, quickly, education, water, transportation, healthcare. In the big picture, general economic development. One thing of specific note, though, that REAP is going to be engaged in is spaceport. REAP is very interested and eager to help whatever new path you take with spaceport. REAP will be there to help organize outreach events. Get out into the community so that your new team, your P-three team can introduce themselves and their mission and get networking that way. REAP is also involved in the Strasburg Subarea Plan, also involved in the Enterprise Zone. These things are now bubbling up, especially in Arapaho County. There's some convergence there. You'll see REAP all over the place. Mark your calendar sometime in April in Bennett, a new tap house opens. REAP will organize the ribbon-cutting ceremony for that and have related business meetings around that. So I work well with your economic development folks, Jenny Hall and Lucas Workman, and see you around in twenty twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sherodis. Welcome, Dakota. Congratulations. Anything else, Erica?
That was everyone.
Great. So item B is elected officials communications. Commissioners, do you have anything for today's meeting?
I do.
Commissioner Udrihio?
I got a couple of things. Not really scripted, but, and no, I'm not going to take over Eva Henry's non-scripted comments. And no, she would appreciate that joke also. So I just want to say how excited I am to have this board here. I'm really excited that Kathy and Julie have joined us and that Lynn returns. And now Lynn and I, Emma and I are the old folks on the board, I guess, that have been here for a while. My last two years.
You're still older than me, though.
Yeah, I'm still older, yeah. My last two years here, we're going to be dedicated to supporting these folks and making sure we have a good, smooth transition to whoever sits in the seat after me. And I'm really excited. So I want to welcome them, want to congratulate our new Chair, Lynn Baca. And just also brought up Dakota. Thank you for coming and thank you for being engaged and all the stuff that you're learning. And you're going to go do psychology, which is great because I think psychology is probably more important than civics these days than finance, law, or any of the other stuff that I've learned. So I went to law school and I realized that if I was going to be involved in civics, I probably should have. civics, I probably should have gone and get a psychology degree. But I want to thank everyone. I want to thank Mr. Chacho, and just have everyone know that I'm really excited about this upcoming year or two, and it's gonna be awesome. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? Commissioner Malika, then followed by Commissioner Henson.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say I'm really excited to be here, and I'm really excited for this job and the opportunity to work with these amazing people up here. I look forward to 2025. I have a lot to learn. So, I'm really excited to learn and work with the great staff that are here as well. So, yeah, other than that, thank you for the warm welcome. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, congratulations, Commissioner Baca and Commissioner Malika on being elected to Chair and Vice Chair. I want to thank all the board members for their warm welcome and the staff as well. Our onboarding began January sixth, and we were sworn in last Tuesday on the fourteenth. Commissioner Malika and I were in training in the rest of last week with CCI, and there is indeed a lot to learn. But I feel very fortunate and blessed to have this opportunity to work with the great staff here and work with everybody together to help our community that we all love so much here in Adams County. I will be pursuing membership on a NACO National Association of Counties Board. That was, I was inspired last week during training to pursue that and to see where I can best bid in with the team here with the boards, or excuse me, the policy committees they are already serving on. So, there's no shortage of things to do and get started on, and I look forward to the opportunity. And I want to say thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has stuck with us. You know, when we have a lot of pomp and circumstance in the morning, I know that it sometimes delays the meat of the business. But it's so important to pause and celebrate these transitions and to welcome Commissioner Malika and Commissioner Henson to our board. And for those of us who were able to join us last week, along with the governor and the Attorney General who paused and celebrated in the Waymire Dome to welcome them and to celebrate the retirement of two people who have served this county for twelve years officially, and then also in other community roles. These transitions are really important, and I know that our nation is going through a transition as well. And one of the things that has been so important and comforting to me, this MLK Weekend, this Martin Luther King Junior Weekend, is thinking about how this leadership and this board is committed to values, shared values of continuing a welcoming and safe community for everyone who lives here. And one of the things that's been so inspiring, the leadership that we just celebrated and who retired and the leadership who we're celebrating, who is joining us, is that continuation of leadership for every member of community, our immigrant community members, our multilingual community members, our queer community members, our trans kids, and our trans adults, and making sure that we have a community that is as vibrant and as beautiful as a residents who live here. And it's really comforting to me to know that here in Adams County, we are studying and researching how to respond and be thoughtful with NACO committee membership as well as the resources we have available and what we're hearing from community. And I just want to thank you all for that continued investment in Adams County and welcome, and thank you for joining us. And thank you, Commissioners Baca and Malika, for stepping in to leadership in this time.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, I'll just round us out a little bit. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and I want to give a special thank you to the staff members. So, we had quite a bit of organizing. I want to thank Commissioners Odoricio and Pinter, that we've been on a leadership, part of a leadership cohort for the last twelve months, likely twelve months, maybe eleven. What does the future of Adams County look like? And what does this transition mean, not only for the board of county commissioners, but what does it mean for leadership in our staff, for the rank and file, for everyone that's part of Adams County, for our businesses? How do we want to show up? All of those things were, we became the owners of the future of Adams County and what that looks like. And I really want to thank Commissioners Pinter and Odoricio for sticking with that work. That's a program that we're gonna continue here at Adams County for the five county commissioners to continue to do leadership work. We're a very big organization, twenty-three-hundred employees. We have a lot on our plate this year. We talked a little bit about it at the all-employee meeting, but I am so confident in this board and our relationships together. We're all new to this. Today's our day one, and so, welcome all. We have a lot to learn, but you have a lot of support here in the county, on the board, and with our staff. We have really important work to do for our residents and for our employees. So, for the residents of Adams County, I know my family picked it up right away. It's time to get to work. So, with that, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion for the consent calendar. But thank you all for being here today.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent calendar. It's presented on the agenda.
Second. The consent calendar passes five to zero, and we're on to new business. So, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome. Congratulations. The first item of new business is a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement between Adams County and THF Prairie Center Development for vacant land with a purchase price of nine million three hundred eighty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars and ten cents for growth and expansion of the judicial campus. And here to present on that is our Facilities Director, Amir Fakir. Thank you, Amir.
You're welcome. Good morning, Commissioners Henson and Julie. Welcome, and congratulations, Commissioner Baca. On behalf of the Facilities and Fleet Management Department, my name is Amir Fakir. I'm here to present a strategic real property acquisition for your consideration. The property we'll be discussing, we have put on the screen in case anyone can't see up there. A little bit of background. THF Prairie Center Development, LOC, has listed for sale approximately twenty-eight acres of vacant land. Subject property, as is described in this document, the property is adjacent to existing Adams County facilities at the intersection of Bromley Lane and Judicial Center Parkway in Brighton. The county has identified this twenty-eight acre parcel as a strategic opportunity to address the needs outlined in the Facilities Master Plan, or what I call the FMP for short. It was dated August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. The FMP, or Facilities Master Plan, was approved by the BLCC on August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. The plan outlines for anticipated growth and expansion due to the judicial campus being at its capacity. The property will provide accommodations for growth and expansion of the judicial campus to include, but not limited to, courtrooms, staff, judges' and attorneys' offices, interview rooms, queuing, parking, and potential for expansion of RAPROM services, complementing the judicial campus, community, and their constituents. Staff recommends approval of the purchase and sale agreement according to the terms and conditions that's attached here in the PSA or purchase and sale agreement with a purchase price of nine million three hundred eighty-seven thousand and seventy-one dollars and ten cents. Does the board have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm gonna support this, because I think it's important for us to continue to acquire some of the properties strategically near some of our existing facilities, especially it opens the door for more options. The vote today for me is, has always been our intention to acquire this property for broadly public safety reasons, but it doesn't necessarily mean we're locking in a commitment on the location of a jail at this location for me. I still feel like it's important for us to continue to have other discussions about that. But I will support this, because I do believe this is important for us to strategically acquire this property. It makes sense for many reasons, and it keeps many options open. So, that's, I just want to make that statement that I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to very briefly echo the comments by Commissioner Odoricio. I'm very happy that this parcel of land is available, and we're able to, we were able to work out a purchase agreement for all of the reasons that he stated, the location and what it will enable us to do here in the future. So, I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Others? I'll just repeat what Commissioner Odoricio has shared. We've been notified, I think this is public knowledge already, that the city of Aurora is, well, the city of Aurora is changing their service model, their court system. So, additional court cases will now be pushed onto county court, which will support this expansion, the purchase of this land and the expansion. I agree with Commissioner Odoricio. Maybe Commissioner Henson also stated it, is the city of Brighton was very clear on the intent of any land being purchased to support the detention center. So, while I'm supporting today, I'm supporting under the premise that this is not gonna be used for that action. So, can you speak to that at all, Amir, at this point?
Thank you. What I can speak to is the Facilities Master Plan did call for an expansion of the JCO judicial campus, and to call for, like you said, roar, roar courts are gonna be coming, the district attorney is out of space. We're looking at co-locating courtrooms. We're already converting ADA rooms to courtrooms now because they're overcrowded. So, this particular parcel was strategically aligned with the Facilities Master Plan to do just that. That is the focus of the space property.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, thank you. Any others? Nope? Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm happy to elaborate on that answer. If you have the contract in front of you, you'll also see page three of the contract includes a deed restriction that restricts some of the uses on the property, but it includes a restriction for a county jail detention facility. However, it does not prohibit the use of the property for temporary holding cells. And so, that is acknowledged in the purchase and sale agreement too. And as Amir mentioned, the acquisition is for a broader set of uses, but that deed restriction is in the contract as well.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Kristen. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Pinter, second by Commissioner Henson. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Amir. Anything else, County Manager?
No, Madam Chair. That concludes new business.
Okay. County Attorney?
Sorry. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We have two executive sessions on your agenda today. First would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six, four-oh-two, four-B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding development agreement at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. So, if I could ask you to vote to go into that as time allows today?
Okay, motion by Henson, second by Malika. That passes five to zero.
Thank you. And then the second would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six, four-oh-two, four-B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the IGA with Denver.
Motion by Henson, second by Pinter. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take about, do you need some time to set up for land use?
Yes, probably a few minutes.
Let's do a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for the land use hearing.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome, new Commissioners, Malika and Henson. We're very happy to have you here with us. I'm Leah Campbell. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department, and I will be presenting on three-eight-hundred West Sixty-Fourth Avenue rezoning at three-eight-hundred West Sixty-Fourth Avenue, RCU twenty-twenty-four dash fourteen. And the request is for a zoning map amendment to rezone a one-point-four-acre lot from Residential One-C to Residential Two. So, here is an aerial view of the site. Here's the subject site, highlighted in blue. It fronts on West Sixty-Fourth Avenue, and it's kind of equidistant between Sheridan Boulevard and Federal Boulevard. And here is a more zoomed-in aerial view of the site. It's currently developed with a single-family home with a few accessory residential structures. It is one-point-four acres, and there are some single-family homes adjacent to it. And here is a current zoning map of the subject site. The subject site is currently zoned R-one-C. The two sites adjacent to it on the west are zoned R-two. There's also some other R-two in the area, some R-three, some R-four, and then this PUD to the east and the south is developed with single-family homes. And here is a future land use. And here is a future land use map of the site. The subject site and all adjacent properties have the future land use designation of residential medium. There's also some residential high, some mixed use, some institutional in the area, and I'll go over a little bit more about residential medium in a future slide. So here is the, the criteria staff uses when reviewing for a zoning map amendment. One, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, it's consistent with the development standards. Three, it complies to the development standards. And four, it's harmonious and compatible to the surrounding area. So let's talk about the future land use and the dimensional standards. So the comprehensive plan designates the subject site as residential medium. This is a transitional category between higher and lower density. It supports lower-density multifamily building form and it supports the zone districts of R1C, R2, and R3. And then as far as dimensional standards go, the minimum lot size in the Residential 2 Zone District is 5,000 square feet for single-family homes or 3,500 square feet per unit for two-family homes. And then the existing lot is 60,900 square feet, so it meets the minimum dimension or minimum lot size standards for Residential 2. And then the minimum required lot width is 50 feet and the subject site is 100 feet. So the subject site meets the minimum required lot width for the Residential 2 Zone District. And here is the conceptual site plan. This is just conceptual. The rezoning will not approve the site plan. The applicant plans, if the rezoning is approved, to do a major subdivision, which will include two subdivision processes, so major subdivision preliminary plat and then final plat. And subdivide into five lots with the, which, with a duplex on each lot for a total of 10 units. Again, that's not approved in the rezoning process. So we'll have to go through that subdivision process in order to achieve this site plan. So here are current site conditions from my site visit. Here we're looking north out from the subject property across West 64th. In this photo, in this photo, we're looking west and east along West 64th. And here we're looking south straight into the subject site. All property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet were notified of this request. 403 notifications were sent and three comments were received. One comment was of general support for higher-density development with the caveat that that should be paired with infrastructure and transit as well. And then two comments of opposition citing concerns about too much density, the blocking of views and the vicinity of the proposed driveway on the concept plan to the adjacent lot to the west. All referral agencies were notified of this request. There were some FYI comments, advisory comments for the subdivision when, when we get to that point, but there's no issues from referral agencies for this request. So staff feels that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the development standards and it's compatible with the surrounding area. And this case was heard before the Planning Commission on October 24, 2024. There were two comments in opposition again about concerns about too much density views and the vicinity of the driveway. There was no questions from the Planning Commission for staff or the applicant. And then this, the Planning Commission makes a recommend, recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So they recommended approval five-zero with four findings of fact and two notes. And likewise, staff recommends approval of the rezoning with four findings of fact and two notes. Here are my recommended findings of facts and the note to the applicant. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. So just as way of order, I apologize to the board. Staff does a presentation. It comes back to the board for questions. So this would be the time for any questions for staff. Applicant will come up and introduce themselves, state their address for the record, do any additional presentation or make comment. Then it comes back to the board for additional questions. Public will then be invited and then it will come back to the board for discussion and deliberation. So at this time, if there aren't any questions, we'll invite the applicant to come down. Fantastic. So name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Tom Bauer. I live at 9220 Stewart Street in Westminster.
And do you have anything additional to add to your project?
Nothing to add that Leah didn't present unless you guys have questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here. Anyone from the public here today, looks mostly like staff, public comment for land use? All right, let me come back to the board for discussion and deliberation.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Odoricio?
All right. I'll try to get into the habit of using the. So I think this, this development makes sense. I think that with it being middle, I think going to, I think it, I think it makes sense. So I would recommend. Okay, passage. I move for the approval of the rezoning, RCU 2024-00014 with four findings of fact and two notes, unless there's more discussion that people want to have.
No, I think this is technical assistance.
Yeah, then I'll, I'll hold off on my, on my motion. But my statement is I think that this makes sense. It's in a neighborhood. I think that like if there are any neighbors that are concerned, they could, literally could be seeing folks ask for higher, higher density in this location. But in this case, I think this makes sense. It's compatible and I will be supporting it. And so as soon as we get through all the questions or comments, I'm happy to make that motion, but I'll wait.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Odoricio. Commissioner Hansen and Commissioner Pinter?
Thank you. Yes, I, I also, I'm, I'm pleased to support this. I think that it makes sense that it is going with, with an in-between property from single-family detached into higher density. I think it's very compatible and it's a very nice way to transition into potential higher density as is the, the land use map indicates. So, thank you.
Just, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues and I was helping my seat neighbor with a technical assistance on her software. And just, I love that Steve has made a motion, but we want to hear from the public as well and like complete the process.
I did ask for a public comment.
I just heard the applicant come down. I didn't hear public. Oh, I guess I was distracted by the technical assistance myself. So, good job.
It's all good. Okay, there's any additional discussion by the board, then we can make a motion.
Just for clarification, there was nobody else in the public here that wanted to speak on this. I'll second the, I'll second the motion.
As an assistant Commissioner Hansen, could we get the motion screen so that she can make the, her first formal land use motion? So you're going to move to approve the rezoning, no, the screen right here, read it off. Move to approve the rezoning and then you're going to read it like this.
I move to approve the rezoning, RCU 2024-00014 with four findings of fact and two notes.
I'll second that.
Go team! And the motion passes five to zero. Okay, next item for land use.
Okay, hello again, Leah Campbell, planner with the Community Economic Development Department. And I will be presenting the ALERT subdivision amendment number one, PLT 2023-38 at 14957 Lane Wood Street. So the request is for a subdivision replat to reconfigure two previously platted lots in Agricultural 1 Zone District. I want to note here that this replat is not creating any new lots. There's nine lots in the current subdivision and there's nine lots in the proposed subdivision. But it will reconfigure a lot line so that a currently unbuildable lot will become buildable. And I'll explain this a little more in the next slide. So this is the current ALERT subdivision plat. The subject sites are 1B and 1A. So the entirety of 1B is currently within a floodplain and there's a plat note on this plat that says no building is allowed in the floodplain. So the applicant is proposing to move this lot line right here to about here so that Lot 1B will net about 1.5 acres of buildable area. And the remaining of Lot 1B will remain in the floodplain and will still be unbuildable. But there will be about 1.5 acres of buildable area on Lot 1B. So here is an aerial view of the site. Here are the subject sites outlined in blue. We have East 1, uh, East 152nd Avenue to the north and then Lane Wood Street to the east. And here is a more zoomed in aerial view of the site. This is the southern lot. It's currently developed with a single-family home. And then the northern lot is currently vacant. So here is the current zoning map of the subject sites. All, the subject sites and then all of the lots within the ALERT subdivision are zoned A1. This is a PUD to the east that's developed with single-family homes. We also have some other A1 in the area and some A2, A3 and residential estate as well. So here's the future land use map. Most of the adjacent properties and the subject sites have the future land use designation of residential low. This, this is for low-density residential, allows for R1, Residential 1C, Agricultural 1 and residential estate zoning districts. And then there's also some agricultural large-scale and some parkson open space in the vicinity as well. So this is the criteria that staff uses when reviewing for a subdivision replat. One, it complies with the standards and original conditions of approval. Two, non-conforming lots are not created. Three, it's harmonious with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations. And four, it will not adversely impact the public health, safety, and welfare of Adams County residents. So here is the proposed plat. I've, I've highlighted the subject lots. So the lots will now be called Lot 1 and Lot 2. And as I showed on the previous slide, this, the lot line will now be here. So Lot 2 will net about 1.5 acres of buildable area. And then Lot 1 will be 2.5 acres and the minimum lot size for the A1 Zone District is 2.5 acres. So both lots will meet the minimum lot size as well as the minimum lot width. The minimum lot width is 150 feet for the A1 Zone District. There is a plat note on the proposed plat indicating that areas within the floodplain are unbuildable. So the area of Lot 2 that's within the floodplain will remain unbuildable. So staff feels that it's consistent with the original conditions of approval of the subdivision. And because there will be no building allowed in the floodplain, staff feels that there will be no adverse impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of Adams County residents. So here are some photos from my site visit. Here we're looking north, north and south along Lane Wood. Here we're looking west into the subject property. And here we're looking east out from the subject property. So all property owners and occupants within 2,500 feet were notified of this request. 140 notifications, 147 notifications were sent and there were no comments received. And then all applicable referral, referral agencies were notified of this request and there were initial comments from United Power and the Public Service Company making sure that their easements were maintained and we were able to assure them of that. And then there was some back and forth with the Division of Water Resources, but we were able to assure that the lots will have the water necessary to build a single-family home on the new, newly buildable lot. So staff feels that this request complies with the development standards and original conditions of approval and non-conforming lots are not created. It's harmonious with the surrounding area and there will be no adverse impact. So this was heard before the Planning Commission on November 14, 2024. There was no public comment. They did have a few questions about the floodplain, water availability, and the existing conditions on site. And they voted to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners, seven-zero with four findings of fact and one note to the applicant. And likewise, staff is also recommending approval of the replat with four findings of fact and one note. So here are the findings of fact and note. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions.
Fantastic, thank you. Questions for staff? I do have one question. Who makes the final determination on water availability? Because I'm assuming this is all well-septic.
The Division of Water Resources.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. All right, time for the applicants. Applicants, if you want to come forward, state your name and address for the record.
G'day, I'm Steve Burnett. I currently live at 1060 Wesley Adora in Glendora, California. And soon we will be living here at 14957 Lane Wood. And if this is all approved, my son and his wonderful family would like to build a home in a lot that's created by it. So that's all I have. The staff has done a great job putting this together for us.
Okay, thank you so much. Questions for the applicant?
Little family compound, huh?
That's what we're joking, yes.
Warning, warning. I'm just joking.
Commissioner Odoricio lives on such a good location. He speaks from experience. Maybe he can recommend a good family counselor. I don't know. No question.
All right, doesn't look like anyone from the public. Thank you so much, applicant. All right, back to the board for discussion and deliberation.
All right, Madam Chair. There's no other discussion. Misery loves company and so I'll be the one to. I'm totally joking, totally joking. Don't tell my wife I said that. It's a total joke. You're gonna, it's, it's awesome that you're doing this. So I, I will make the motion to approve the replat, PLT 2023-38 with four findings of fact and one note.
Second.
Motion in second. Motion passes five-zero. Congratulations to you and your family and welcome to Adams County. With no additional business on the agenda this morning, we are adjourned at 11:05.